And school readiness, a significant number of parents are focused on preparing their children for school and making sure that they're ready when they hit those kindergarten doors. Okay. Some additional feedback that we did receive from families, positive and you know, some room for improvement is several parents did praise their parent educators for, you know, being helpful and knowledgeable and resourceful, noting how valuable their relationship is with their family and how it leans to the growth. They are requesting for flexibility in our programming. So it was suggested that some of our group connections, we do hold a majority of them through the day. We do offer some evening, but I know for those working families, they want to see more. And right now, we just don't have the capacity to do that. Program impact and value, multiple responses reflect the program was invaluable support in helping their children reach their milestones and prepare for school. Again, it comes, we have another suggestion for expanding the program. They've suggested that the program should be expanded and funded more to reach more families emphasizing flexibility and the crucial support it provides for parents and children. And there's also a suggestion for more parent educators to be available because they do like that one-on-one, those home visits. And then we did have a request for more information in Spanish. That's an easy fix. That's something I can do in-house. So just a summary of the two evaluations pulling them together from the dish, from the staff point of view and the family point of view is that the program is highly valued for its positive impact on families, empowering parents and supporting child development. And they appreciate the caring staff and creative approaches, improvements on staffing, compensation, communication could enhance effectiveness. But overall, they, you know, want to see more flexibility and accessibility, but happy with the program and strengthening community. That is all. Do we, questions?
Are you aware of the study that the Department of Education just sent a notice out on today?
Did you see that that was part of the research?
Having to be the number one top school on the list.
It sure was. It was. I think there was only 23 districts out of, what is there, 523 districts? Five?
Forty-five.
Yeah.
There's a lot of little districts.
I know. There's a lot of those teeny-tangies.
In essence, what they said that parents as teacher in home visits makes an impact and they feel that you can see that impact and they measured it third grade to see language arts and mathematics and the difference that it makes. And of course, it also pointed out that PAT is celebrating its 40th birthday last week. And so obviously a significant impact is made on many children's lives. My child was a PAT kid as well, and it was nice to know where they were. And I always hope to God that they scored where they're supposed to.
My children were also in the program. Yes, that was a very, and they did, if you read that study, there's a lot to it. But if you read it, it does show that the intensity of visits, those kids obviously scored a little higher. So.
How many people do you have now?
How many parent educators? We have one full-time, Tanya, she is our bilingual parent educator, and then I have three part-time staff.
Okay.
I think it would be fun to know how many employees we have in the district that are Grace graduates.
Oh.
Just, just for.
Grace graduates or went through parents as teachers?
Both.
That would be an interesting.
That would be fun to know. Jill, you have that off the top of your head? That would be fun.
That would, that would be fun to know.
We, we moved her head a couple of years ago.
I know. But her heart's still there.
It is.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. As always, keep doing a good job. And you know, we all appreciate it. And we all know what you're going through. And you know, that's one of those things that we always look at is, you know, what can we do better? So we just have to wait.
We know we have your support and we're very appreciative of that.
And the home visits are awesome. This grandma's crashed a couple of those by accident. So.
I may have observed it that household a few times.
Yes. Yes.
All righty. Grace Early Childhood Program Evaluation.
Nope. I mean, I could read it to you, but it's not nearly as cute as the kid pictures. All right. Good evening. I'm Amy Loveland. I am the principal at Grace Early Childhood. And for the program evaluation this time around, I wanted to just start off with the program description. You guys know, we've got a variety of programs there. We start at six weeks, we go all the way up to kindergarten, free programs, fee-based programs, full-day programs, half-day programs. We do it all. And so this program evaluation really looked at all of those programs. And so all of the programs are using the same or similar curriculum and philosophy through conscious discipline and project construct. So we're focusing on developmentally appropriate practices that are all aligned with the Missouri preschool standards. And even our students who have been identified as having developmental delays and special needs, those IEPs are connected to those early childhood standards as well. And I linked them there if anyone, you know, wants a little bedtime reading. So looking through all of those programs, we have a set of goals. And I thought it was important to review those because we see them come up then in survey responses from both staff and parents later on. So our goals at Grace are related to self-esteem and impulse control and social emotional skills, all of those preschool skills that are really important in school readiness before they hit the elementary doors. So demonstrating cooperation and pro-social behaviors, and then also acquiring learning and problem-solving skills and expanding their thinking skills, as well as what we would consider those pre-academic skills. So the early reading and writing and math skills. And then we always focus on doing that through play. So what we would think of as preschool, the make-believe play, the pretend play, all the experiences that they can have in sensory play, gross motor, et cetera. So those are our goals in terms of how we teach and learn at Grace. Knowing that, we did put out stakeholder surveys. Two surveys went out. One went out to all district staff and one went out to current Grace parents. What we all have to acknowledge is we have a lot of district staff that are current Grace parents or former Grace parents. So we made that part of the survey. And when we looked at the responses, we had a low response rate across both of the surveys. Neither survey got more than a 10% response rate, which was kind of disappointing, but I know people are getting a lot of surveys right now. So I think that may have impacted a majority of the individuals who responded to the district survey were parents. So they were getting that survey two times. So ultimately, I grouped most of the data and responses together when looking at their comments because it's the same people that are filling out the survey and giving us that information. So it just gave us a more comprehensive picture of what they were looking at. I could not group the graphs. It was going to be too difficult to break that out. But on the parent survey, you will see that everybody rated us at either excellent or good. So overall, parents are very satisfied with the programming that we have at Grace. The district survey, again, a majority of people are saying that the program is excellent or good. There are some individuals that indicated that we need improvement, and we'll see those comments come up in the areas for improvement. So strengths that were identified, parents are reporting that it's a high-quality program, that they love having their children attend, that they're benefiting from having a safe and nurturing place for their kids to go. Lots of comments about staff appreciating the district being dedicated to having that as an option for them. I think that they recognize many districts don't have a grace for staff's children to attend. And then comments about the dedication of the staff members at Grace and how they go above and beyond. You'll notice that there are a lot of parents who are valuing the social emotional learning and the focus that the program has on that, the positive impact that that has, because you'll see that come up again later, for everyone who likes it, there was someone who had a slightly different opinion. There is a program impact, definitely. Several parents were crediting Grace for preparing their children for kindergarten, for helping them stay on track. And comments were made about on track, both academically and socially. And then we had families who appreciated the different routes of communication that Grace staff uses. So we have seesaw as well as folders. And so we got electronic communication as well as daily notes, different apps in the childcare side for our younger kids, where you're tracking food and diapers and all that good stuff as well. So there were positive comments about those services. In terms of opportunities for growth, lots and lots of notes about capacity issues. We are very full. We have an extensive waitlist. There are always people who are hoping for a spot at Grace. And so notes about the fact that we are unable to serve all the children in the Belton community. So parents were asking about more classrooms, additional space, as well as transportation. Transportation is a piece that comes up a great deal because only select programs have transportation to and from those part-day programs. So if they are unable to be in the childcare portion of Grace, and they want to attend the half-day preschool portion of Grace, but their parents are working full-time, we have a very select number of spots that have that transportation. So that's sometimes a barrier for people's participation. We did get a lot of comments about staffing and pay. A majority of the staff at Grace are those paras. And so that para pay showed up in the comments a lot. It takes a lot of non-certified staff to make Grace run between our childcare and our other classrooms and childcare ratios. A few parents noted staff turnover and suggested additional training and support for newer staff members. And I will just say that staff turnover in all of education and specifically in early childhood is a national concern and definitely something we are working hard to try and retain staff at Grace. Academic preparation. So this is where I, I noticed that we have some parents who are suggesting we need a greater focus on academics. And some parents then in that next bullet noted that they felt we had shifted too heavily towards social emotional at the expense of academics. So trying to strike a balance between those two things and helping parents understand that they aren't necessarily separate items, that when we are focused on social emotional learning, it's really that school readiness to help kids have the ability to access that pre-academics. So we really, I think, need to work on our communication about how those things are connected, that those ready-to-learn skills that look like soft skills are really crucial to help them access the pre-academic skills. Because if we don't have those, we can't get to the others. So better communication and messaging about that and striking a balance between those two things is definitely an opportunity for growth for us. So just in summary, overall, the program is really praised for the approach to early childhood education. Again, the academic readiness, the family support. We saw time and time again, comments about what a valuable resource it is to the community, to the staff here in Belton. And I will just say, as an aside, not reflected in the survey, we get a lot of interest from surrounding districts. It is not uncommon for me to have assistant superintendents or early childhood directors from our neighboring districts reach out and say, hey, can we come take a look? Can you tell me how you guys are doing this, what this looks like, et cetera? So there's no way to quantify that necessarily, but it is, I think, important to note that we really are doing something very special as a district. And we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. As always, you guys are doing a great job as well. So all righty, Belcher Scholarship nomination.
Yes, I want to thank our high school counselors for the work on this. They have nominated Malia Hardy to apply for the MSBA Belcher Scholarship.
All righty. Very good.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the nomination of Malia Hardy for the MSBA Belcher Scholarship.
We have a motion and a second to approve the nomination of Malia, Malia or Malia? Malia Hardy for the MSBA Belcher Scholarship. Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Cass County Kids first.
Yes, we presented this, I believe, last month in regards to legislative priorities, which will soon be upon us in January. And so therefore, the administration recommends the approval would point out, obviously, it's going to bill 727, and the funding of that was one of the obvious additions to this. A lot of items that have been a part of this legislative platform for a number of years, but are still important just because they haven't been addressed. We're still fighting the fight for our students in public schools in Missouri. So the administration would recommend the passage of Cass County Kid First 2025 legislative priorities as presented.
Motion to approve the Cass County Kids First Legislative Priorities as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Cass County Kids First Legislative Priorities as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Job descriptions under new business.
Yes, there is a updated job description for accounts payable, food service, transportation, secretary. You can see it's rather colorful this evening, but just made some updates and consolidated some of those job responsibilities. So the administration asked the board for approval of job description as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the job description as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the job description as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Horizontal advancements.
Yes, couple of horizontal advancements this evening. The administration asked the board for approval of horizontal advancements as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the horizontal advancements as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Some miscellaneous board tours recap. Last Friday, some of the board members got together and went around and saw every school. As always, I appreciate Radar for putting that together. It's always enjoyable. And this year, you guys added in the teacher celebrations, which I thought was perfect. I would rather do it that way from while I'm remaining on the board going forward. So I think that's a pretty good thing. So as always, I enjoy the board, the building tours. I will tell you that it was kind of sad that Dr. Sodeman wasn't around telling me what all she needed money-wise. I'm sure, sure Bob will rest easy when he gets back from vacation, knowing that she didn't ask me to spend any money. So.
I think she's tutoring TJ, but I'm not sure.
So. So anyways, I enjoyed it. And as usual, I enjoy being with the kids and, and seeing all the teachers and doing what they do best. So anyone else would like to speak?
Yeah, Kim, you talk about the celebration part.
I know you said that, Mr. President, that you enjoyed going on the tours. I think the teachers really appreciated you all taking the time to be a part of that celebration. I think it meant even more so that you guys were there to be able to be with them. So thank you for that.
Okay, Jim, anything?
No, just very enjoyable seeing the teachers and all the celebrations of the hard work they've done.
Yeah, very good. And Mary, you've already said yours. All righty, all right. Some committee updates. MSBA delegate.
Okay. I got some events coming up here we can mention. November 20th is the monthly Zoom meeting for president and vice president. And then also on November 20th, there's a financial workshop for, it's called Landing 727, and that's in Columbia on the 20th. They have a crisis communication and emergency planning meeting. You have to register by November 23rd, and it's December 5th and 6th in Columbia. January 13, and this is one I think all of us are interested in, there's an AI webinar from 6:30 to 8:00 that evening to continue more about AI and education. It's pretty far in the future, but mark your calendars, March 11th is advocacy day at the Capitol. So anybody who could attend, that would be great. So that's the dates and things that I have. Jerry, do you have anything from your region meetings?
I do not. We don't meet again until January as a board of directors. So I know that we've made some minor changes in the hierarchy of, you'll say, so Melissa Randall is the executive director, but also going to be probably moved up as CEO since the MSBA is expanding in to the security and all of the other things. So it's going to change the way it looks, but she'll still be the person in charge of all of it. So other than that, that's, and I'll have more for you in January when I go. Belton Educational Foundation.
Okay, that's me again. We had, I'll save that for last. On November 14th, we had some members, Sonya and some members of the board, went to breakfast and received a $10,000 grant. And that grant is to be applied for tuition assistance for our dual credit classes. So it's going to be for our students rather than scholarships after they graduate. We, Gladden families collected 1,150 food items for the Pirate Pantry recently. So that was pretty good. We have one of our local banks donated over 100 coats. We just received those. I didn't attend the Turkey Bowl, but I know there are a couple of people in here who did. So if they want to comment, because I know it was a good time. I was at Supercalifragilisticexpialidocious. That's where I was during that time.
I did go to the Turkey Bowl, and it was a very successful for the foundation's first, the first event. Obviously, the Turkey Bowl's been going on for a while, but this was the first time that the foundation has done that. They had 18 teams and the place was just packed and just all kinds of raffle items. And I think it was extremely successful event, always fun, family-friendly. They had themes. Some of the teams had themes and they had a contest of who was going to win the, the best team. And I believe it was the Raymore Police, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, best theme. Yeah.
And they had on these psychedelic.
Hawaiian shirts.
Hawaiian shirts with neon colors and animals and, and all kinds of things. And so it was, it was just really an all-around fun event.
And the high-scoring team was?
I think it was the police department.
No.
No, it was.
Oh, it was the Belton bowling team.
Belton High School Bowling Team.
And I'll tell you, it was kind of funny because not my team, but the, the people that were bowling right next to me, they, they had like a 680 something in two frames to go. And these little kids come by, and they weren't little kids, they were teenagers, came up and sat down beside me, and they kept talking and pointing. And I kept looking down and thinking, we're watching that team. And I said, why are you watching that team? It's because we're high right now. And they, they ended up getting the, the high score, but they were watching the team bowling next to me because they wanted to make sure they didn't go over there. I think they had a 732. It was good bowling.
It was. My wife enjoyed it. She was a little depressed that she didn't get the lowest game. She's used to winning that, although this is the first time we've ever had that award for her.
She tried too hard.
She did try. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, she was, she, but as always, we, we had it with some friends, and it's always a good thing. The Turkey Bowl's always been fun. And I was glad that the foundation was voluntold to do it. I think they are, are, I hope they made some money off of it, but I think it was a pretty good thing overall.
We'll find that definite answer out at our board meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. All righty. TIF tax abatement.
Well, as usual, I watch City Council online. And I believe the mayor was not there, maybe two other, three other councilmen were not there. So that kind of caught my interest a little bit because they were, I guess, streaming. But I did not, unless I'm mistaken, did not see anything that would involve TIFs or anything like that. So.
Dr. Underwood, I think you have some information.
Yes, as far as any kind of incentive or abatement, I did receive a letter from Commons of Belton just, I guess, this week. Yeah. And they are notifying Missouri House Development Commission that Commons of Belton is applying for a federal housing 4% tax credit to assistance construction of a family housing development to be located at 1202 Westover. Development will create 252 units consisting of one, two, and three affordable apartment units with energy efficiency.
1202? That's right. That's the soccer field.
And they're not.
Up there on Westover.
Higher than two stories, I thought, too. Doesn't say in there, they're not going to be higher than two stories. Doesn't say that.
Great.
Says they will have washers and dryers and HVAC systems.
Okay.
HVAC is good to know.
I would be concerned. Often say we need to have a balance of housing in any area. And I feel like where we lack is more of three-bedroom, two-bath, four-bedroom, three-bath type home for people. We have a lot of affordable housing, a lot of low-income housing. I think we have come short of for many a year, having that other adequate like buy-up housing for people as we have lost employees to move away because we do not have that. And so I think that this would add to an area that we don't need. We need that other level to have a balance.
I think this is a way that we're bypassing the building codes of the, any new build have to be at least 1,200 square feet. That's not much, but at least we have that standard. But these will not be that big. So that's one way to get around that building standard, too.
Okay. Well, I know they're not going to like their neighbors. So just saying, that's a busy building. All righty, Belton cares.
Kind of slow time right now, but we have billboards out on 49. If you looked at them that right now, our, our promotion is don't drink and drive. And those will be up for November and December. We will have signs changing every month or two from now until a year from November. So we've gotten a pretty good, and we have different sponsors that will appear on the signs that have donated to, to help with those signs. So take a look when you go by, but not enough to be distracted when you drive. That's my theme. So we postponed our town hall meeting. It happened to be on the same night as a Chiefs game, so we weren't getting very many RSVPs. And the city also had a town hall for people to come for their budget. And the city also had a town hall for people to come for their budget to discuss. That Monday night, since we didn't have the Belton cares town hall meeting, I went to the city town hall meeting and I was the only non city person there in the crowd. So I went back Wednesday hoping there would be new questions. And once again, I was the only non city person there. So people like to complain, but they don't attend always. But so that's kind of where we're at, but we're gonna, we're gonna reschedule the town hall meeting, probably sometime late January, early February. And then the big thing, my thing, everybody get your calendars out right now, February twenty eighth trivia night. So, and we've, and I think I said it last month, we moved it to the high school because we outgrew Memorial Station. So it'll be in the field house. And excited for that. So.
Did you say that's at Memorial Station or is that the high school?
Is at the high school. We've outgrown the Memorial Station. Last year we were just too crowded. So we, and I already have it on the ML system. So it's, it's, we're in and that's, that's kind of where we're at with things right now.
Perfect. February twenty eighth. Okay. Alrighty. Some miscellaneous dates here for you tomorrow. For all of you that would like to come, it is our annual senior citizen luncheon at the Field House at Belton High School at noon. As normal, they'll probably start showing up about ten. So my dad will probably be one of them there at ten oh two wanting to know where I'm at. November nineteenth is Mill Creek Pictures retakes. November twenty first is Belton's Got Talent at the high school at seven PM. November twenty fifth is Senior Pictures. November twenty sixth is Belton High School Picture Retakes. November twenty seven through twenty nine is Thanksgiving break, no school. November thirtieth is Elvis Christmas Show at Belton High School, seven thirty PM. December sixth through the eighth is the middle school fall musical at the Forum. December twelfth is the Grace Pictures Retake. December seventeenth is the Belton High School Winter Band Concert at six PM. December eighteenth is the Belton Middle School Choir Concert at seven PM. December eighteenth is also the Staff Holiday Reception at Yocatraz, three to five PM, five thirty. December nineteenth is the Belton High School Company Play at seven PM. December twentieth is end of second quarter. December twentieth through January third, no school for the holiday break. January sixth is no school for Staff Professional Development Day. Any dates that the chair missed. December twenty second through the January third is no school for a holiday. Okay, I was giving them a couple of extra days. So were you. That's, they'd probably like that, but I don't think Dr. Mock would like that. So, yeah, alrighty. Anything else for the good of the cause, folks?
I just got to bring up, I'm going to bring up the, this just went to Kong or went to the Senate yesterday, day before yesterday, it's our windfall elimination provision, and it's where teachers and other public employees who are in private pension programs do not get the full amount of social security that they may have paid into. We've been working for years to get that overturned so that teachers can get the full amount they paid into. And so we're, we're on a good track. If anybody would like to send emails to your legislators, I have a quick link. All you got to do is put your name in there and it'll generate that letter. I've already had it respond back to me. So let's push this through because a lot of teachers have other jobs besides teaching. And we've paid in, we deserve to get back what we paid in, not of right now, speaking personally, I get one third of what I've earned back in social security monthly. Because I'm in the teacher retirement program in Missouri. So if we could get this overturned, that's my plea to send your congressman letters and let's keep this moving forward.
And I would just add that it's also firefighters, police also are part of.
Railroad.
Railroad.
Roaders don't get it.
Would be another as well. And so it does affect many. I do feel like there is an urgency as Congress just passed. And so there is that hope to get it done before the end of the year. So it would be monumental. I've heard examples of people get 25% of their social security and it's all because they just have another pension.
And it's if you have a private pension program. Yeah. And this, when the House of Representatives sent this forward, it was from a bipartisan committee. So it was overwhelmingly sent by the House of Representatives, which I think is great. So.
Okay, very good.
Thank you for letting me.
That's okay. Alrighty, nothing else for the good of the cause. The chair will accept a motion.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I think yes. Thanks, folks.